Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, September 8th at 7:00 PM. The City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, .072, .073, .074, .076, and .086. The City Council reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. All matters listed below shall be eligible for discussion, both discussion and action, unless otherwise specifically noted. It is 7:00 PM. We have five of us here in council chambers, and Councilmember Jackson is virtual, so we have a full house, and I am calling us to order. The first item on the agenda is for us to say both of the pledges. If you are in the room, if you would please rise, we'll say the pledges together.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
If you will please remain standing. We are honored to have another of our police chaplains. Pastor Phil Woods has joined us this evening. Really appreciate you coming out, Pastor Woods.
Father, we want to thank you tonight for the ring that you've sent around the vicinity, and thank you for that that's still in the forecast. We are so appreciative and thankful. Tonight, Lord, as the council and the mayor proceed with the agenda that is before them, we ask for your direction, your guidance, and your wisdom. Tonight, Father, we ask that you bless each one of our workers throughout the city and each department. We thank you, Lord, for their service as they serve us and what they bring to our community. And tonight, Lord, we ask your direction and guidance for our chief and assistant chief and those officers that are working under their command. We know at times they put themselves in harm's way, and we ask for protection, for guidance, and for wisdom. Lord, we thank you for that. We live in unprecedented times, and so, Lord, tonight, we pray for peace. We pray for unity, and, Lord, that we could learn to live together with our fellow men, no matter the color of our skin, but, Lord, that we could live in unity. We ask that you help us in that endeavor tonight, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Woods. Great to see you. Be safe. All right, council, we're going to the top of the next page, and the first item is Item 4A, and that would be the mayor's report. And I have just a few things for you this evening. There's not a PowerPoint, but I have a couple of things I want to share. First of all, Detective Darren Glenn and his wife Catherine had a baby girl since we last were together, and Zoe Ray is her name, and she has an older brother and an older sister. And my understanding is the older brother wasn't real sure if he needed anybody else in the house, but he has adjusted and thinks it's okay to have another girl in the house with him. So their mom and baby are doing well, and we are so happy for them and excited to expand our Bastrop family. I also want to point out, and I have so much fun doing these. I got an email from a woman named Sandra Allison, and I would like to share it with you guys. "I would like to compliment one of your employees in the planning department, Viviana Hamilton. I have been doing building permits for 22 years for KB Homes. We not long ago began building in Bastrop. The department in my time working with Bastrop has gone through a number of personnel changes. I feel fortunate that Viviana has remained there. She has excellent customer service, is always super helpful when I have a question or need help with anything. This really makes my job so much easier, and I'm grateful that I am able to get this kind of excellent service from the department. I just wanted to reach out and let you know how much I appreciate her." She sent that on Wednesday, August 26th, and I just want to thank Ms. Allison for taking time, because, trust me, more people find time to complain than people find time to send praise, and very well deserved. So congratulations to Viviana Hamilton. That's really, that's a fun thing to share. And while we're congratulating things, Chief Nagy is with us, and tomorrow he will have 18 years of service with the city of Bastrop, and we are very thankful for Chief Nagy. And also tomorrow is Trey Jobe's birthday. He is not 18 years old, but he is having a birthday. Let's give Chief Nagy and all of our employees a round of applause.[347.81][347.81](applause) So happy birthday, Trey, and hopefully we won't keep you here real late tonight, and you'll get to do something fun tomorrow. Excuse me. Since our last council meeting, one of the things that I've started doing is a mayor's council brief, and you may or may not have noticed that. It is on our website. If you go to For Residents, and it's right under Council Information, you'll see Mayor's Council Brief. And some people call them blogs. It's a little article, but it's a, not everybody wants to enjoy hours upon hours of our time together, so if they choose to and they don't want to try to follow things on Facebook or Twitter, there's an, it's, I try to keep it to a page, but it's a review of the meeting, and I'll do another one this week. Council, for your calendars, I want to make sure that you're all aware that the Region 10 virtual meeting with our legislators is next Monday at 6:00 PM. That's a virtual meeting, and you've all gotten an email. You can register. If you need any help registering, I'm certain that Ms. Franklin will help you with that, but that's specific to our Region 10. At our last council meeting, I talked about the crane that was going to be in town for the construction of the 921 Main Building, and even though it rained last week, the crane got done. All the wall panels were placed. It was very awesome. There's some really cool pictures. I'll be happy to share those with you, and the building is still on schedule to be completed by the end of October. This morning, we had our quarterly community support meeting. Several of you are aware of the fact that on our contracts, when we give people community support money, one of their obligations is to attend quarterly meetings. It gives them an opportunity to visit with each other, and quite frankly, sometimes they have folks that come to them with needs that they can't meet, but then they know what other organizations can do, and so it really benefits the organizations and it benefits the citizens. And there were two things that came up in our meeting this morning that I wanted to share with you. On Thursday, September 17th, not this Thursday, but the next Thursday, at 9:00 AM, there will be 24 pallets of fresh produce that will be distributed. It's in the Film Alley parking lot, and folks line up in their cars. There's no paperwork. There's no questions. They do social distancing. You pop your trunk, they put the food in, close your trunk, and you're gone. They haven't, they had been doing the food distribution with Fresh Bites and YMCA, and this fresh produce, there's several organizations that are coming together, but if you know of anyone who could, is in need and could use the fresh produce, that is Thursday, September 17th at 9:00 AM at the parking lot at Film Alley for as long as the 24 pallets last. And then last but not least, another thing I learned this morning, the Opera House is starting their season, and their opening night is this Friday, and the play is called Exit Laughing, which I just love, because I think we are all ready to laugh and have it, be around a comedy. They are only going to sell 50 tickets, and that's so they can keep people socially distanced at the Opera House, and for some people, they'll be thrilled to see a live performance and to be around some other people, but some folks may not quite be ready to be at the Opera House, and they are also selling live stream tickets. So you can be in your jammies or whatever you want to be in and watch it live stream from home, and you can see that live stream performance. It's three weekends and, you know, blah, blah, blah. One of the weekends has a matinee. It's generally Friday and Saturday night, but if you go to the Bastrop Opera House website, you'll see everything about the season, but if you were looking for something to do this weekend for council or anyone at home watching, I was really glad to be able to share that good news. That concludes my mayor's report. For council member reports, council member Ennis.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things I'd like to say. One is I'd like to give a shout out to our electrical department. Saturday night, we had some arcing when some wet branches touched some electrical lines. They were Johnny on the spot. The electricity was off for about an hour. This was 10:30, 11 o'clock, and I have to say that I wouldn't want to be up in a bucket cutting limbs at 11 o'clock at night, but they did a wonderful job, and I just want to congratulate them for the hard work. My second thing is I would like to urge everybody to offer up their prayers for our brothers and sisters in the state of California who are experiencing 1,000 times, 1,000 more than we experienced with our fire, and particularly to the military that is airlifting folks out of the danger zone. If you've watched any of the news reports, they're zooming in there with zero visibility, and it's a really frightening situation. So I hope that everyone will give their best thoughts to that and their prayers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor, pray Tim Nelson.
Nelson tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The only thing I'd like to remind the public is I believe that BISE is starting part Go to School tomorrow, and so just remember your school zone, that they will be going back to school, and just want everybody to be safe.
Great reminder. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, Mayor. I'm just, I hope people don't get tired of hearing this, but I'm going to say it anyway again and again. Take care of yourself, be safe, be kind to yourself, and be kind to others.
Amen. You cannot say that enough. Thank you very much. Councilmember Jackson?
I just had one comment that I'm hearing quite frequently from a lot of citizens, and I don't know if the rest of the council is hearing anything, but I'm getting a lot of feedback, and it's not been, unfortunately, it's not been good feedback about our Main Street project, which I'm excited about, and which I know that it's still, it's a work in progress, but I keep getting people that are, you know, through Facebook and then phone calls and text messages, and wondering about how this is all going to work in the end. And I've just been telling them to be patient, that we're working, that it's coming together, and we had opportunities for people to review it earlier, and, but I'm just hearing lots of negative comments from people. I don't know if anyone else is, but I just wanted to know, I don't know if we should address it publicly, maybe in a community meeting or something, and listen to some of their concerns, but it's just, it's pretty overpowering sometimes, the things that I'm hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I'm sure if you have any specific concerns, if you will contact the city manager, he'll be happy to visit with you about that. All right, council, we're moving on to Item 4D, and that is a proclamation of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing September 20-
We'll see, City Manager.
Thank you. Sorry.
Is it PowerPoint?
I know, PowerPoint and everything. City Manager, sorry. I wrote notes right over where it said 4C.
I appreciate the efforts toward an efficient meeting.[833.25][833.25](laughing) But I do have PowerPoints and everything. So the first topic is about cross-functional teams. Cross-functional teams are a good way to get people who are most closely associated with dealing with city issues, the problems, to be actually a structured part of the solution to those problems. Cross-functional teams are a good way to distribute workload amongst the organization. It's not always true that department directors need to solve every problem and be involved in all of that detail, and it's been my experience here in Bastrop so far that we've got capable people, also busy, but capable people who are willing to take on more of those problem-solving burdens as well. And it's a good way to spread out decision-making and accountability and responsibility throughout the organization. So I'm creating three cross-functional teams. For the most part, these teams won't be staffed by department directors. They'll be staffed by others, and given the relative size of the city organization and the nature of the work here we are describing, some city employees will necessarily be members of more than one team, and as the slide indicates, those three teams are Communications and Special Events Team, an Administrative Team, and a Safety Team, and the next few slides will provide more information on each. So first, the Communication and Special Events Team, it will be focused, as the title of the team implies, on efficient and effective communication throughout the organization. This community is, and this city is committed to good communication. We put a lot of resources into the subject of good communication. The staff that is responsible for this care very much about what they do. They're good at it. There is room for improvement. We can ensure that all elements of the organization are included in that citywide corporate message. We can be intentional, 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 I'm sorry, about making sure that all of the naturally occurring networks, social networks, professional networks that are out there in the, in the community are plugged into what we're doing and can help distribute information on the city's behalf. Something we talk about quite a bit internally and will, and will be a focus of this team is the recognition of the fact that this growth in Bastrop that we are experiencing and will experience for the next several years, it won't necessarily be from people who are moving here because of our historic downtown, but because of the city's unique characteristics. A lot of people who will be moving here over the next several years are moving here because of our geographic location, because of where their job is. They'll be commuters, and we want to take on the challenge of making sure that those new folks have every opportunity to care as much about Main Street and downtown and all of the other things that make us cool and special as the people who have lived here for a long time do. So that'll be a focus of the team as well. I'm going to ask, I have asked Rebecca Gleason to lead this team up. I really appreciate Rebecca's enthusiasm for all of this. The idea isn't to put another burden on Rebecca, because she has a lot. The idea isn't to divert her attention from being the Main Street manager. In fact, the idea is to give her the resources and tools she needs and all of the help she needs to do her job well. I mentioned at, I think, my very first city manager report that what's good for Main Street is good for the rest of the city, and vice versa, what's good for the rest of the city is good for Main Street, and I think that's part and parcel of what we're trying to do here. The second team we've created is called the Administrative Team. There are systems and processes that the city is involved with internally, procedural stuff that cuts across departmental lines that would benefit from a bit more clarity, a bit more coordination, a bit more education about what those processes are. This team will have a particular focus on customer service. I've seen this sort of thing work well before in other cities that I've been associated with. Just getting the right people in the room together or on a Zoom call together every once in a while to share stories about customer service issues. It is, it is my experience that the toughest customer service problems there are to solve aren't limited to one department, that the tough ones cut across departmental lines. And again, getting all those heads together doesn't always have to be department directors who are solving these problems. Our team of department directors here is fantastic. This is, again, not trying to put new burden on someone else. It's about distributing some of that burden. We can do a bit of a better job in internally how we, how we manage the agenda development process, not just for council meetings, but for boards and commissions as well. The mayor and I were just talking about that as an example earlier today. So one aspect of what this team will be involved with is making sure that there's consistency and quality in how we deal with all of our boards and commissions from a procedural standpoint, how we implement the city's brand, which, and we've been inconsistent and a bit haphazard with that. I think that's a problem. I don't think that's befitting the kind of community, the kind of city we want to be. So we'll work on that. Council's been dealing with purchasing policy in a workshop. It's on your agenda later. We can do a better job of making sure that all of the people in the organization who administer those policies are plugged in, communicated with, are part of the problem-solving process, and the list goes on. I would like to plug into that team and have them tell me what they think the training needs of city employees are. I think on a department-by-department basis, we probably do a pretty good job of that. I'm thinking back up from all of that and think about that a bit more corporately. And I've asked Ann to lead that team. And the last team I'm describing here that we've, that we are creating is, this is pretty straightforward and, I guess, self-evident. We are creating a Safety Team. Again, in my visits with departments and their staff, I think there is a safety consciousness out there. I'm not at all suggesting that we neglect the subject of safety. Again, from my experience maintaining the kind of safety culture that we need to have and want to have, really does start with management, starts with me, but it also creates a corporate approach. It requires a all-encompassing safety policy, and you need a systematic and structured approach to reviewing safety-related accidents, incidents, and even near misses, and have a team of employees look at those and make recommendations for how to prevent future problems. And our HR Director, Tanya Cantrell, will lead that team. So, council, those are three teams that we are in the process of putting together right now. Thank you, Councilmember Ennis, for mentioning tree trimming, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit as well. My weekly memo from last Friday made mention of the fact that our contractor is in town, will be in town for the next three weeks. Our social media group is pushing out information through social media and through other means to let folks know that, you know, people will be trimming trees around their homes over the next few weeks. We also do the door hangers and other brochures, and I know council's probably already familiar with all of that. We're also taking the opportunity to let people know about their newly rolled-out opportunity to go into the MyGov Request Manager module and document their concerns and their questions. And we do have the system set up so that city employees are seeing those messages and are responding. And this is where Mr. Ennis stole my thunder, and I do appreciate it a little bit, about why this really does matter. And I was going to report as well on that very same power outage. It was at about 10 o'clock that evening, as Mr. Ennis said, where we did receive a call about a low limb that's in the 1,500 block of Pecan. That limb was actually burning. That line was de-energized about 20 minutes later. I agree, that's pretty good responsiveness by the BP&amp;L crew, and then re-energized, again, as Mr. Ennis said, about an hour, hour later. And I do have a photograph of the limb in question impacting that primary line, and I don't know if you can really tell from that photograph, but it was, it was charred and burning. Council, I mentioned this in the city, in the weekly memo from Friday as well. We have our annual employee luncheon scheduled for September the 18th. It'll be in the convention center. We will be employing social distancing standards. Mayor and council, you guys are heartily invited to attend. If you'd like to attend, please let me know, let Tanya Cantrell know, and that would be, that would be lovely. That's at noon time on September 18th. I'll highlight a few future council workshop items. The weekly memo has a more complete list of action items, but for now, I'll just concentrate on what's on your workshop list. At your, at your next meeting in two weeks, we will be prepared to provide a short presentation and allow council to discuss whether or not we'll employ the CMAR or the Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method for the Water Treatment Plant versus a more traditional design bid build. Trey and I have been meeting with Freezing Nichols representatives to go over that. We'll have another meeting with them later this week, and then we will ask them to give you a short, no more than 10-minute presentation on the basic differences between traditional design bid build versus a CMAR approach, and we'll get council's feedback from there. And then on October 13th, which is your next meeting after the September 22nd meeting, Trey and Jennifer have been developing a list of amendments to the B3 code that we think would be a good idea for council to consider amending for the purposes of easing the implementation of the new code requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission has already been working through that, and it'll be good to get council up to date on all that, so that'll be a workshop discussion on the 13th. And council, you'll remember that a few weeks ago, we had a discussion with regard to Wilson Street and the removal of the yellow dots, and in that discussion, we've heard some input from the neighbors that they're interested in other methods, including speed humps. We don't have a speed hump policy. Council asked that we develop one. We will, we will bring some considerations for you on that subject on October 27th, and by that time, Trey and I will have had at least one meeting with the neighbors where we continue to get their feedback on such matters as well, and we'll be able to report on that. Not yet scheduled, but Chief Nagy has been working on a golf cart registration policy. I'm not sure if council's been getting a lot of request or feedback on this. I know the mayor has. I've received a few requests as well that we loosen up our current requirements on golf carts in town. The city of Smithville has recently passed an ordinance that has a registration process that's pretty easy to go through and essentially allows golf carts in town, not necessarily associated with a special event, which is basically how the city of Bastrop approaches that now. We haven't plugged Allen into this yet, but we'll have that conversation with Allen, and at some point in the future, we'll give council the highlights on that. I want to offer a kudo as well to a city employee, Kimberly Hanley, who works in our Public Works Department, specifically Water and Wastewater Special Programs, took a scam call a few days ago. This was somebody who purported to be with a printing company, asked what the model number was on a piece of office equipment. Kimberly alertly said, "No, this is probably a scam." She researched it. As it turns out, this is a, this is a thing. What these companies will do is illicitly get your model number, and then they'll send you boxes and boxes of overpriced toner and expect you to pay for it. And so I thought I'd pass that along. I appreciated the heads up and the resourcefulness and the fact that she, she also dug into it a bit and found out more about it. And Jesse Miga, our IT Director, spread that around to all city employees, which was good stuff. And finally, I want to offer some words of appreciation. A lot of effort has been- A lot of effort has been happening, especially these last few weeks, by the Bastrop County Complete Count Committee. As council knows, we have been lagging behind the same amount of progress from 10 years ago. I appreciate the extent to which Mayor Pro Tem Nelson is involved in this and makes mention of it. It seems like progress has been made these last few weeks, reported on that in Friday's weekly memo. There's a big push happening countywide and also here within the city of Bastrop to get out a lot of information over these last few weeks of September. And notice from the weekly memo as well, council members, if you haven't already, if you'd like a yard sign that helps get the word out, let me know, let Rebecca know, and we'll be happy to take care of that. Counsel, that's it. Can I answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hoffman? Good job. And I had mentioned this to Mr. Hoffman, and I want council to be aware of it as well. On the golf carts, the other thing I thought we might want to get a policy about was the scooters.
And Chief Nagy have had a conversation about that, and not exactly the same subject, but we'll certainly report on both.
Okay. I just, with the students coming in January and the location, I don't want us to be responding to it. I thought we ought to have the conversation holistically beforehand and be fair and reasonable, and I just think that that could be coming. All right, and I'm so sorry I skipped you. I feel terrible. Now, it is time for the proclamation. All right, item 4D, proclamation, recognizing September 2020 as National Library Card Signup Month. The next library board meeting is next Monday, and we've gotten, had just great results over the last year, and our library continues to get awards and find grants, and I know that, counsel, you agree, that our librarian, Becca Sexton, has just done a fantastic job. So, whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, and whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, whereas library resources serve students of all ages, and signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond, and whereas a library empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests. Libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities. Now, therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim September as National Library Card Signup Month. So, one of my favorite library stories is I had, I grew up in an age where I was the remote control for my father. We watched whatever my dad wanted to watch on TV, regardless of how interested my sister and I were in what was on the TV, and I had a, my stepmother would say to me, "He can't change the channel if you're reading a book." And it made us all very avid readers because I could complete the story and I didn't have to deal, he wouldn't come take the book out of my hand. So, I'm a big believer in books, and reading and the ability to read can just answer a lot of problems for a lot of people. So, if you don't have a library card, get one, and if you have it, use it. Counsel, we have no work sessions or briefings tonight, so we're going to move on to staff reports. Item 6A, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2020. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, again. This report for July is not going to be different than previous months. The funds that have been in warning or negative are, there's not much change in those funds. As we've explained, the electric fund, the hot fund, the cemetery fund are all in negative. On the expense side, we're positive across the board, so we're good there. On the general fund...
Oh, my goodness.
Let me get Doc caught up. General fund revenue versus expenses, almost 10% net positive in this fund, and sales tax revenue is still above our forecast. It's still very strong, even under the circumstances.
Pretty impressive forecasting there, Ms. Waldron.
Property tax revenue is slowly starting to close the gap, so I think in the next couple of months, it's not going to catch up with our budget, but it's going to be pretty close. On the water and wastewater fund as a whole is a little over 2% net positive. On the revenue side, we are above our forecast, and this last July, we did 24 new meters, 23 residential and one commercial, so the homes are still going pretty strong each month. On the electric fund, we're a little, right at 2% net positive, and I believe I had some notes in there on that particular one. Electric fund revenue, still, the LCRI, we're applying that credit all the way through the end of September, so that will be negative all the way through the end of the fiscal year. Hot tax fund is a little over 14% to the net negative. On the revenue side, just, this is just the hotel occupancy tax. It's over 35% net negative. It's about $837,000 below where it was last year. I am starting to see that revenue pick up, though, slowly over the last couple of months, and that's my report. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Good job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number seven, citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor, we do not.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, consent agenda. Does anyone want any item pulled from the consent agenda for individual consideration? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the August 25th, 2020 regular meeting and August 26th, 2020 board interviews meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2020-26 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Economic Development Budget for the fiscal year 2020 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repelling all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2020-82 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the issuance of a Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Project application to the General Land Office and authorizing the city manager to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Community Development and Revitalization Program, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This completes the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We're moving on to items for individual consideration. We're on the top of page three. Item 9A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance number 2020-25 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as a management director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety. Counsel, let me tell you that tonight, I do not have an ordinance before you, but I fully expect to bring you one at the next meeting. Let me give you a brief update on the COVID situation. We are in day 177. So, if you think it feels like forever, it's because it feels like forever, day 177. Let me give you some really good news. The current total cases is 1,638 in Bastrop County, with estimated recoveries at 1,462, which makes our active cases at 149. It's the first time we've been less than 150 cases since, like, end of May, June, and when we were tracking the cases then, we weren't doing recoveries. So, it's pretty impressive to be at 149 active cases. There have been, unfortunately, 27 deaths. In the last week, there were 56 cases added, but we also had a significant increase of recoveries. So, the trending is definitely going in the right direction. Have a few more statistics, and then I'll tell you what I want you to be thinking about and that I'll be asking you to consider at our next council meeting. There were 141 tests completed last week, which brings the testing total to 4,945. The Mayfest site is now closed. You may recall that a couple of weeks ago, we had a state-sponsored testing site for 600, and they had 85 people come for testing. So, there's just, there, we, you know, it's that curve. Everybody wanted to test, and we were short on tests. Now, we've got several testing sites, and we just aren't seeing the kind of requests for tests that we'd seen previously. Locally here in Bastrop, the St. David's testing site is open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they have both the nose swab and the mouth swab. Those of you who still get your utility bill in paper had inserts about the testing, and it's in English and Spanish. It's got all kinds of great information. If you do not get your bills by paper, all of this is available online. You can find it at the city's website, you can find it at the county's website. So, if you've got friends and family that are needing a test, it is, they are readily available, and the testing that you go through the county portal to get to is, would be free testing for a person who is a resident of Bastrop County, with some caveats. If you work for Bastrop County and you live outside of Bastrop County, your test is covered as well. The call center got 24 calls last week. They used to get 100 calls a day. So, the call center got 24 calls last week for a total of 2,686. And I've been wanting to ask Sheila this, but I'm a little afraid to. Out of that almost 2,700 questions, I'm wondering if it's like five. Where can I be tested? I need help with my utility bill. So, my hats are off to the folks who are answering the same question over and over and over, and doing it with great customer service and really trying to take care of folks. For the state of Texas, the positivity rate is 7.2%. You will recall that the big milestone was 10%, and the state of Texas is below that. And there was a quote from Governor Abbott a week and a half ago that said, "We got to get through three things: the hurricane," which Bastrop fortunately got through that with no problems whatsoever, "school openings, and Labor Day." And after that, he would look into further relaxation and take a look at what the rules are. So, as Councilmember Rogers so correctly pointed out, we had, we've got folks that are going to be going back to school next week. We just got through Labor Day weekend. So, what my thoughts are is that by the time we meet again, it'll be two weeks later, and we'll have a good feel for how things are going, and we are hopeful that people are wearing their masks, and if they, when they can't maintain social distancing, that they're making good decisions. And at that point, I would like, on September 22nd, it is my intention to bring to you a recommendation that we consider going to Phase 3 on October 1st. That would do things like opening City Hall, opening the convention center for bookings, opening the senior center. Now, when I say openings, that is not, Katie bar the door, we're pretending like none of this has ever happened. That is with safety protocol. That is with temperatures being taken and mask requirements, and, you know, there's caveats with that, but specifically for City Hall, before COVID, it's not like we had 90 people in the building all the time. Most of the people who come by here have a meeting, and they have a place of business, and quite frankly, if they can get in the building to get their temperature taken, it's a little bit easier than somebody having to get up to open the door. They're closer to them going through all of that. So, just kind of want to visit about that. And along those lines, the city manager has got some information. We had talked about making modifications to some of the buildings and any of our people that would be interacting with the public to make sure that we keep everybody safe, and I'd like Mr. Hoffman to share some of that information with us.
Sure. Thank you, mayor, and I may need some help from Trey. What's on the screen? And we've got a couple of different ways to show you what we have in mind for those permanent type of building modifications. This is, the current thinking is that this is limited to the utility customer service area over here in this part, and I know this is hard to see, but this is essentially to let you know that we actually do have a design for this. And Trey, if you go to the next, and this is not the utility customer service area, but it's an example of what it will look like with the permanently placed Plexiglas shields, the speaker box for the customer service folks and the citizens to speak through, and a slot at the bottom where documents and payments can change hands. We think this is a good thing to do that would be in place even after the pandemic is over for some added security and for that part of, part of the building. We've met with the staff there. They're all on board for this, and we can, we'll wrap up with a comment about how much all of this would cost. This is all pretty clearly reimbursable through CARES Act funding. What we have in mind for the reception area here in this part of the building and for the semicircle desk at the library isn't anything nearly as permanent as what we have in mind for utility billing. The, what we have in mind for the reception area here and for the library would be freestanding removable temporary Plexiglas shields, yay tall, this wide, but also with the space at the bottom. There's an example on the screen that transactions can safely be made underneath the sneeze guard, if you will. Not as permanent as what was discussed previously, as I understand it, but then again, that more permanent approach, I would be concerned would have an impact of feeling just a little less accessible and really wouldn't add any safety features and would be more expensive. So, that is, that is the thing we have in mind now, and all of this can be done, Trey, for about $27,000. The bulk of that expense is here at the utility billing area, utility customer service area.
So, Mr. Hoffman, my, just for clarity for council, my understanding is that we would start on the construction of this, so that, and it would be in place before we would start the October 1st Phase 3?
Yes, ma'am.
And if for some reason we postpone Phase 3, then, you know, it will be there and we'll be ready to go whenever we're ready to go.
Right.
So, I got three lights on. I have no idea who was first. Does anybody know? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Hoffman, I didn't hear you mention planning.
Yes, sir. We do, thank you for that. We do have something pretty simple in mind for that conference room that runs perpendicular to the utility customer service area, something similar to allow for a customer service representative to be behind the Plexiglas shield.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rogers?
Oh, that was her question.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
And to clarify, the expense is 100% reimbursable through CARES. Thank you.
So, the, in the planning area, really, it wouldn't be, it'll end up not being a conference room because you'll be able to walk in and interact with someone, which I think, Councilmember Peterson, that's been part of the concern, was people didn't even know where to go to talk. All right.
Thank you for that. Thanks for asking that question.
Okay. So, counsel, we've, we are starting to get calls from the senior center folks. They are tired of being cooped up. They've, they know how to wear their mask, and they are ready to spend some time together... and they are ready to spend some time together. At the community support meeting this morning, I mentioned that I would be asking you guys to be putting some thought into a Phase 3 for October 1st. And there was a discussion about, well, what if the governor still has a rule of less than 10 for a social gathering? At the Senior Center, they have a room for quilting and a different area where they do bingo. So we'll have to do the safety protocol and work together for that. But I believe there's a way to be common sense and be safe and get on with life. So if you've got concerns, if you would please give me a call, but I wanted you to start thinking about that. The Phase 3 is pretty well detailed. It's on that four-color chart that you've seen before. And I'm sure that Chief Rosales or Trey or Mr. Hoffman or somebody will send it out to you if you need a reminder, refresher copy of the ordinance. So there isn't anything to vote on on 9A tonight. So we've, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question about the announcement that went out in the utility bill.
Yes.
Is there, is it possible to get those announcements, like attachment to the ones that, to the customers that are getting it paperless? I mean, we've asked them to go paperless to save the city money, but then we were, to get announcements, they're going to have to go back to this. I'm just wondering if they can, I don't know how hard that is.
So you're saying if they get an email with the bill, can that, at the bottom of their bill, can there be the?
All their attachment. Instead of making them go back to the website? I mean, we're putting it there because we don't want the people to go to find.
I made note of that too, when the mayor mentioned that. I actually didn't know that folks who had electronic payments didn't get that notice. So we'll certainly follow up on that.
Great, great question. Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Boy, getting information out is hard. It seems like the more places we put it, the more people say, "I had no idea what you were talking about." So, yeah. Excellent suggestion. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
As you go into consideration on what you're going to bring back to council, bear in mind that there's been discussions amongst our planning and zoning folks about wanting to return to in-person meetings. Through your appointments, you have a very vigorous group of citizens there who have an exchange of ideas and concepts that have been somewhat stilted because of the virtual meetings. And I've been asked by their illustrious chairperson to ask that live meetings be reinstated.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Nelson. In Phase 3 for public meetings, it does say that all city meetings would be in person. So that would be a part of Phase 3. Exactly to your point of, there's just some conversations that Zoom just doesn't, it just doesn't work. So, and I too have received comments from folks that want to be safe. And we've used the council chambers and put a commissioner at each table. There's ways to do it safely, but folks are ready to get together and get some business done. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Nelson. All right, we're moving on to Item 9B. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-58 to the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the City Council Rules of Procedure attached as Exhibit A, establishing a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Council, you have before you a very nicely done red line. It started with, here are all the things that we changed, and then here was the red line copy behind that. This, I don't know what the color's going to be for this year. Last year it was bright yellow. And a couple of the comments, I think, were even from before because I know one of them, like it said, include the boards and commissions. And last year's title has city council and boards and commissions on it. So I think, I think the majority of this is in good shape. I know that Mr. Borquez made sure that we were compliant with all the most recent laws and statutes. And Alan, you might, if you have any comments, I'm happy to take those. I know one of the things you tried to do was reference current law so that we weren't trying to update specific statutes all the time, correct?
Correct. Is this it?
Yeah, there you go.
Couldn't find the switch. To avoid having to constantly tweak things, if it's not a specific Bastrop preference, we just started referencing state law. So as the state law changes, these will automatically update. We provided for the new law regarding citizen comment periods at all meetings, but did not take away the requirements of decorum. And so trying to balance those two things is reflected in the red line draft that you have. We also put in some language to deal with the fact that sometimes we may be dealing with comments submitted before meetings and not necessarily live and in person, since we don't know how long this will last or if something like this will come up again.
Excellent. Council, any questions for Mr. Borquez or Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ennis.
In 3.12, "Council may discipline its own members." It says to consider such an action, "Any council member may place the item on an agenda." Earlier in our procedures, it takes two members to place something on the agenda. Are we contradicting ourselves? I don't mind the one. I just want to make sure we're not contradicting ourselves.
I'm sorry, I missed the two people requirement. Councilman Ennis, do you happen to have a site for the first part?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
I do. Hang on just a second. So Councilmember Ennis is referencing Page 13 under Article 4 Agenda Order, the second paragraph. It says, "In order to facilitate the agenda process, the mayor, two council members, or the city manager may place an item on the agenda." And so then he's saying that if we're disciplining someone, only one council member can make the request. I thought that that was intentional so that if there was an issue with a council member, it wasn't being discussed and it would be an executive session item. But I'm, but you are exactly right that that's, it's different than what is in the rest of it. Do you have a recommendation?
I just want us to be aware that we're contradicting ourselves.
Sure.
So.
What are your thoughts?
I think it's the pleasure of council on this one.
Council, do you have thoughts? It's a step in the right direction because before, we didn't even have how to get it on the agenda. So I'm, does anybody have, Councilmember Ennis, you brought it up. Would you like to make it to, a mayor or two council members to be consistent?
I'd rather be consistent, but that's just because I'm a consistency freak.
Comments from other council members? Councilmember Rogers?
Consistency is always good, so I'm okay with the two. Because if we're having a problem with a council member, surely more than one of us knows about it.
So if anyone would want to make a motion, you'll want to make sure that you do it with that contingency. Is there any other questions, Councilmember Ennis? Any other questions?
I would be interested in the Mayor Protem's pearls of wisdom on this side.
Well, I certainly agree that consistency is the key. If we're going to have it in one section, you need to have another section to create that semblance of normalcy anyway. So I'm totally agreeing with that. I'm sorry that I didn't catch up.
Any other items that anybody's concerned about addressing in what was presented?
I move to approve with that change to the two members.
I have a motion.
Mayor and, Mayor and two members.
Mayor or two members. I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers. And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Council, it's 8:00 o'clock. It's been an hour. Councilmember Ennis, would you like to take a quick break and get a drink of water or anything? You okay?
I'm fine so far.
Okay. Any, everybody okay? All right, let's keep rocking and rolling. We're on Item 9C. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-79, approving the City of Bastrop Purchasing Card Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so I've included in the staff report the changes that were made from the last meeting. On this particular policy, I don't have a PowerPoint. I just cleaned up some of the consistency of the titles and also added the section on the annual review and reporting. And under the Section 2 Eligibility, added the sentence about the department directors and supervisors can make a request to the city manager for a purchasing card in their name. Those are the only changes that were made from the last.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Yes, ma'am. I believe you also removed the section under Usage in three. There was a bottom part that we talked about that says you could buy anything that.
That had already been redlined on the other one. So the only thing I'm pointing out is things that changed from that version to this version.
That's fine. I just didn't see it redlined the first one I went back.
Yeah, so it has been removed though.
Any other questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to Item 9D. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-78 to the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the City of Bastrop Purchasing Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So in your staff report, I've put in there some bullet points on the changes from last meeting till this final version. We did move the definitions to the front of the document as requested. We also added the lowest responsible quote to the bidding section. And we also added to the end of the policy, the annual review and reporting. I believe those are the only changes.
I've got lights on. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, on the section about lowest responsible quote, I'd prefer to see that lowest responsive quote. Of course, responsible quote opens up other avenues. Or is there a legal stance on that, sir?
Mayor Protem and council, I flag you just because when that came up at the last meeting, I actually looked up the bidding statute, and they use the term responsible. And so it's my recommendation that we be consistent with that.
We just talked about consistency. I'm good with that.
I hear you all are fond of that.
I was following Michael.
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Ennis?
I noticed at the end of these that the city manager is going to review these. And, but it doesn't say, or at least I didn't read into it, that it would be brought to, brought to city council for approval.
I think it actually states in the financial management policy that these policies will be brought back to council for approval.
Okay. If it does, can they be not included in the budget and approved separately like we're doing tonight?
That's what we have been doing.
Okay, great.
They're in the budget document at the end, just so that you have them. But we bring them separately as a separate resolution.
I thought in the past that we'd approved the budget.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
That we'd approved, we'd approved, they were approved when we approved the budget rather than as separate items. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Well, we know for sure the purchasing card policy, we'd never seen before. So we know that's an example of one that we had.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the point being that they're important and spend time with them separately, I think is your, no problem?
Exactly.
Councilmember Rogers, did you have your light on? Did I miss you? Okay, all right. Any other questions for Ms. Waldron on the purchasing policy?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. We're moving on to Item 9E. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-77 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Financial Management Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yeah, so in your staff report, this is, this policy had a little bit more significant changes. So we did add some more information under the fixed assets and inventory to really tie it into the purchasing policy as well. And to specify, instead of saying reasonable safeguard, put in a little bit more meat in there about our counts, our physical count, and the proper maintenance of city assets. Under the operating reserves, we added some more language in there. Added the sentence at the end, "This should be followed by a plan to mitigate the recurrence of this type of shortfall in the future." The IRS compliance, we actually do have written procedures for post-bond issuance federal tax compliance. So I just changed that to mirror what we actually do have in place right now. And on the risk management program, pointed a little more to the investment policy because that really is our public funds guidance on risk management with our funds. And so if you have any questions, that's, those sections have been updated and added.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Nelson?
I just want to acknowledge the work of our financial committee, the work of our finance department, and the work of our city manager and of the staff members on this. This is excellent work this year, and I really, really appreciate it. It's an easy process and it's an open process. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Garrett, do we have Mr. Cox online? Turning on his mic. All right. We're moving on to Item 9F. Consider action to approve the first reading of Resolution Number R 2020-81 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the distribution of funds to Bastrop businesses to assist businesses with expansion of their enterprise pre and post COVID-19 disaster and/or with the retention and training of employees during the COVID-19 pandemic and national disaster in an amount exceeding $10,000 per project and per business, providing an effective date and move to include on the September 22nd, 2020 council agenda for the second reading. Good evening, Mr. Cox.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I am back again repetitively, this time over our COVID grants. We have six businesses that require, under the statute, Texas Local Government Code Chapters 501 and 505. If they're going to receive a total of over $10,000 in any grant as a project from the EDC, then it has to be approved by two readings of council. So that's why I'm here. Six of our now 125 businesses are over $10,000, which is good. We've been frugal. Some of these have received three grants in each of the three rounds and are still less than, some people got, say, with the county in one round of grants. So it shows we've been frugal. We've looked at a lot of data, a lot of financials, and made our decisions over a lot of different metrics. And so I'm asking you to approve those six grants in the total amount of $65,000 for this third round. And for the six businesses, $114,000. And all of those, so you know, are in the hospitality restaurant industry, which has hurt the most with COVID. Any questions?
Council, you know that I sit on the EDC board, and we reviewed the projects with the recommendation from Mr. Cox and his staff and the verification of tax information, employee information. All of that paperwork's been. employee information, all of that paperwork's been gone over. And when you approve the budget, you know that it included the 25% of the CARES Act that was sent directly, that was made available to the City of Bastrop. So you're seeing where this money is going. Part of the reason why the projects have project numbers is to keep the playing field level and so that it doesn't fall into who knows who, and it is purely about the metrics. And Councilmember Ennis, the consistency with which we are treating the same-sized businesses with the same number of employees and trying to be fair and impartial across the board. Any questions for Mr. Cox or myself?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to compliment you, Mr. Cox, and your board for the, for being so proactive during this pandemic season of ours. The careful and deliberative way you've gone about this is something to be proud of, not only for the BEDC, but I think for the City of Bastrop, and I congratulate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I'd like to echo that. I've heard nothing but good things about the program. Business owners have said that they were so excited to know that there was a concern for their survival and the fact that we were able, or the BEDC was able, to provide the funds. So kudos to the BEDC for doing that. It's made the business community feel very good about living in Bastrop and operating a business in Bastrop.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Move to approve and then include it into our next council agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. We appreciate your time this evening. Moving on to item...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 9G. Discuss and consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-84 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, regarding the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election voting for Places 1 through 4 of the Board of Trustees, establishing a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Counsel, the way this works is we get one vote. We are one body. And you know, in the packet, you were provided, all of the folks, a couple of the places were, one of the places was unopposed, the other ones had a number of people, and I am interested in a motion or any discussion that counsel might want to have. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Mayor, I'm always interested in having folks that represent us who share common interest, problems, issues. I'm also interested in having people who represent us in any way, shape, or form be familiar with us in some way, shape, or form. So with that, I'd like to place a few recommendations to counsel. For Place 1, Robert Herrera, he's currently the incumbent. He has lots of small-town experience, and our city manager has had a positive working history with him. For Place 2, Chris Armuskost, small-town experience and perspective. George Hyde in Place 3, he is known to us here at the City of Bastrop through some of the legal work that he has performed, is well-versed in small-town issues. For Place 4, Kimberly Meismer, wide range of small-town experience. As with the Place 1 recommendation, our city manager has a positive working history with this candidate. I move these recommendations be the city's nominees for the reference risk pool six-year terms.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis for Mr. Herrera, Chris Armuskost, George Hyde for Place 3, and Kimberly?
Meismer.
Meismer.
My apologies, Ms. Meismer.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously, and I will remind you that at our next council meeting on September 22nd, we will be voting on the Region 10 officers and the same kind of thing. We'll have to get a motion and a second, and it's really important that we do it on the 22nd because you have, we have to vote by the 23rd. So the timing for all that worked out good. All right, counsel, we're moving on to Item 9H. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-85 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming board appointments of the mayor as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter outlined in Exhibit A and establishing an effective date. Trey, you going to do it for me? All right. So, well, we have been through this before. I will tell you that this evening, what you have before you is 24 places. Last year, it was 33. In 2017, it was 50. So part of that was when I came on board, there were quite a number of vacancies. And then we've also eliminated two boards from 2017, and we've also reduced the number on some of the boards. The vast majority of the appointments are reappointments. Those of you that are in the room with me, were also in the room when we interviewed the folks who had filled out applications, and you'll remember that last year, it took us two nights to interview everybody, and this time, we did it in one night. And we've got such an engaged community, I really think it's a matter of folks just aren't comfortable getting out, and there hasn't been a lot going on. So I do want to tell you that one of the interviews that we did ended up withdrawing their names, so you're going to see someone's name that you've not seen before, but I will explain that to you when we get there. So I'm going to go through this next part fairly quickly. Thank you so much for participating with the interviews on August 26th. Those are just so much fun, aren't they? It is such a great way to get to know people who are interested in the community. And you know that we view them as an extension of council. They're a way for all of us to hear across the board of what folks are interested in, and so we want to maximize citizen engagement. And in some cases, and for example, one of the people that I put in that you guys did not get an opportunity to interview, your background can make a difference. If you've got some skills and you're wanting to apply them, we absolutely, I for one, want to take advantage of that. If you go to the next slide, this is the boards that meet, and just a reminder that the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Construction Standards Board, and the Ethics Commission, they only meet if there's a reason to meet. I am quite proud of the fact that during the time that I have served as your mayor with all of you, we have had no need to convene the Ethics Commission. That's awesome news because we all want to act ethically. That makes it hard for them to have announced, for them to have picked their own chair and do some things that are required with the ethics ordinance. So this is a heads up that the Ethics Commission's going to be called, but if you hear that the meeting's been posted, it's only to take care of the housekeeping. And if you have a guilty conscience, you ought to undo whatever it is that gave you a guilty conscience about knowing that the Ethics Commission's been called. Moving on to the next board, the Bastrop Art and Public Places. Counsel, you are well aware of the fact because you voted on the Cultural Arts Master Plan Ad Hoc Working Group. And I have not made any appointments to BIP because I know that that group of folks is really, now that COVID has settled down, they are going to start meeting and bringing back a recommendation. I want to thank Councilmember Ennis for agreeing to chair that working group, and also thank Colin Guerra for being the staff liaison that we have a substantial cultural arts master plan. But having a plan and having an implementation plan is two different things, and we appreciate the folks who have agreed to sit on that group, which is Maria Hohenstein, Debbie Moore, Terry Moore, Chico Portia, Kay Sapikas, and Dick Smith. So we wish them the best of luck, and there'll be appointments as necessary as we get implementation. Moving on to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, you were with me when we interviewed Bill Gossett, and I am recommending him for Place 2 and the reappointment of Kevin Plunkett and Charles Washington Jr., who was appointed just in July 14th and is really excited about continuing to serve. The Fairview Cemetery Board is two reappointments. Both Anna Snyder and Mary Williams would like to be reappointed to their board. The Historic Landmark Commission, both Blake Kaiser and Cheryl Long would like to be reappointed to the board. The Bastrop Housing Authority, Place 4 is specifically required to be a resident. The resident who had been serving does not want to serve again, but Brandy Spencer is working with the rest of her board to identify a resident, so I have left that vacant. And as soon as they bring me a name, I'll be happy to bring that appointment forward to you guys. Pastor Woods was here this evening. He serves not only on our local housing authority, he is also the county's representative for the Texas Housing, Texas Housing Board, I think it is. It's with Mark Mayfield, and he's just done an outstanding job and has a, really a servant's heart for trying to identify affordable housing for all of our community. On the Hunter's Crossing, Councilmember Rogers has agreed to be reappointed. And in Place 7, I'm appointing Michelle Dodson. She is a resident of Hunter's Crossing and previously served as the Homeowners Association, so she's got familiarity and experience and has requested to be appointed to the board. The Library Board is two reappointments. Rebecca Bennett in Place 1 and Barbara Clemmons in Place 4, two people who love the library and have just provided phenomenal service. Moving on to the Main Street Board, this is a board that has stayed at nine members because of their bylaws, and they have two members, Jennifer Long in Place 5 and Sean Plesch in Place 8, that have asked to be reappointed. They do have a vacancy. They have a process of going through, how they go through their nomination process, and they don't have a person's name right this moment. And that board is so specific and really needs the right person to understand what they're getting into and have the right experience that I would like to, I'm suggesting that we allow that board to go through their nominating process, so I have left Place 4 vacant. On the Parks Board, there are three reappointments. Place 3, Kelly Dawson. Place 5, Barbara Walansky. And Place 6, Margaret Robinson. On Planning and Zoning, Place 3 has one year left on an unexpired term. This was, this is, Carrie Kaler is a name that you have not heard before. She currently serves as the Director of Planning for the City of Rollingwood, so I think that's a fairly good skill to bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And she is the fiance of Phil Hurley, and if it weren't for COVID, she would be the wife of Phil Hurley. So they've just recently moved to Wilson Street. She has phenomenal experience. She lives downtown. It's only, it's a one-year term. She very enthusiastically said that, because not everybody wants to bring their work home, but I think they have already fallen in love with Bastrop, and she's willing to serve, and I think we would, it would be great to have her. I'm also making the reappointments of Matt Lassen to Place 6, Greg Sherry to Place 8, and Pablo Serna to Place 9. The Construction Standards Board has two reappointments, Michael Osborne and Chase McDonald. The Construction Standards Board doesn't meet very often, but I am thrilled that we have a plumber, and an electrician, and a contractor, and people who have the special skills that are required to make good decisions for that board. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, I am reappointing Scott Robichard to Place 2, and I have a vacancy on Place 4, and I came really close tonight. You watched me almost filling it, and I have one other suggestion that I'm going to be looking at, but I don't have a name for you right now. The council liaisons for this coming fiscal year, I serve on BEDC. I would like to stay on the Library Board. You'll see that this is consistent to what we did last year. I think you guys have been doing a great job. If someone has real strong opinions and they want to swap out, we can change that anytime. We're the liaisons. It's easy enough to change, but this is the recommendation that I have for you this evening. This is a reminder that the Ethics Board does not have a council liaison, the Zoning Board of Adjustments, the Housing Authority, and I've left off Hunter's Crossing, oh no, I put that on there. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and Councilmember Rogers serve on Hunter's Crossing, so there's no, that's why those boards are not mentioned in the council liaison, or council liaison positions. And then my favorite slide of all, whenever I make these recommendations, and I'm telling you, I got pretty happy when I figured out that Carrie Kaler made me be 50% male and 50% female out of my 24 appointments. 13% of the people have never served on a board before. 46% of the people live downtown. 46% of the people live inside the city limits but not downtown, and 8% of the people live in the ETJ. So with that, I respectfully request that City Council confirm the previous appointments.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you for all the hard work, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's one of the, it's a fun thing to do, and it's, we are so blessed to have citizens that are engaged and committed to the process. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, counsel. We're moving to our last item for individual consideration, Item 9I. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-8 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting authority to the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Bastrop County to allow the construction of a new monopole communication tower with a modified development process approved by the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a non-conforming structure as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the agreement, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills, and I need to apologize to you. Ms. Waldron had a ton of things, and if I had thought about it, I would have called you first so you didn't have to stay all night. So I apologize. Ms. Bills?
I thought you guys wanted to see me here more often.
We enjoy seeing you.
So this request before you was a little different than probably things you've seen before. This is an actual, it's an interlocal agreement with Bastrop County based off of approvals that the Zoning Board of Adjustment made at their August 5th meeting. So this is, Bastrop County is, currently has infrastructure on a 450-foot communication tower located on Cedar Street. And what they're wanting to do is to install their own tower adjacent to the existing tower and move their equipment off that existing tower. So it's, it'd be the same, essentially the same amount of equipment out there with an additional pole. The property, however, is privately owned. It's a lease agreement that the county has on this property. One of the interesting, the location of this property is off Cedar Street. You can see Cedar Street currently dead ends, and they have kind of a long driveway that then goes down to this property. It's a little over a 10-acre site. Kind of see a closer-up view. That's a 450-foot tower. It's over capacity, which is why the county's wanting to move their equipment off of that tower. And that kind of yellow dot is the approximate location of where the new tower would go. They're not proposing any new ground equipment. It would connect to the existing sheds that are on the property with the equipment. They'd have a bridge that connects all the wires and power to the existing, to the new tower. There's the tower profile. It's 100 foot tall with a 10-foot actual lightning rod on the top. That's a monopole, so it's supported by, structurally, the other tower's a guy wire tower. You can see the long guy wires that keep it up. So what kind of is interesting about this is that in our new development process, in, with our zoning code and our subdivision code, they're both kind of intertwined. And when you go to develop a site or put anything new down, the first step is kind of looking at the zoning code, what does it allow, what size of lots are allowed in that zoning district to start development. The previous code you would have looked at, it was a commercial thing, a commercial property. We had commercial tracks. Commercial tracks had to be a maximum of this size, a minimum of this size. We don't regulate by parcel size anymore. We just regulate by block structure. So that's where we would have had to start with a, the fresh development process for building new infrastructure out on this lot. That would require a full plating process, building of roads, breaking it down into our building blocks that the code requires. Since there was already existing infrastructure out there, there was a path through what's called the non-conforming use and site section of our code, that if there already is something existing that's non-conforming, the ZBA can approve with the, you know, some conditions attached, some expansion of that within reason with some stipulations. So at the August 5th meeting, the Board of Adjustments reviewed this case. We did notify the property owners in the 200-foot area because towers typically are very visible to the people immediately adjacent to them. We've had... We've had three no objections returned and two opposed in actual written form. We had two people during the meeting that spoke. We met digitally, but they were able to log in online and speak to the board. I kind of summed up some of their concerns about increased equipment, increased, you know, site interference, things like that, and that, that would be expanding the, the life of this property. Currently, that tower that's there has been there, we think about 35 or 40 years, and so it's probably starting to near, at the end of its life cycle, and it will some point either need to be replaced or massively overhauled. Part of the concern with the county, they said it's at approximately 180% capacity, and they, I guess they've had some instances in the county of some of these starting to collapse. So they're wanting to get their infrastructure off. But the neighbors are concerned, of course, with that pole being there another 40 years. So the Zoning Board of Adjustment reviewed, they had a lot of discussion at the meeting, and staff had recommended several conditions, and one was to, since this is expanding a use that's already there and a site that's already there, and not developing the whole property, we recommended a scaled-down development process that would require them to do a minor plat and dedicate just the extension of Cedar Street through that property. One of the things when you get east of 95 is we do have limited connectivity to very large tracts of land back there. So we're not requiring them to build a road, but just to dedicate that right-of-way so the city does have access should we need to put in, and it is in the towed habitat, so it would most likely be more of a rural solid road that would give us access back into some fairly large acreages in that area. So the minor plat would be the one step, and then they would just turn in a site development plan and building permits for the new tower. So it would be a modified process that would allow them to expand that site. With the neighbors concerned, the ZBA added a couple other conditions that there be no more than two dishes on the pole. There's currently three dishes on the existing pole. The county's going to pare those down to two. That's what they need with the new technology. There'll be two new dishes on the pole. And that, for the, the county has stated this is going to be a short-term gap for them. They're hoping in the next two to three years to have a new site and all of this infrastructure moved to that new site. So the zoning board gave them a five-year time limit, that in that time, that they have, they can move all the equipment to the new site, or in that five years, if they haven't, they can come back and ask for an extension from the zoning board. So they could, they could extend this agreement. And then the other requirement is that when they do relocate, at that point, that they take the tower with them, because that, the tower's their equipment, but it is leased on private property. So this, so what's before you denied is to memorialize basically the conditions in the agreement that the zoning board approved at their meeting on the 5th.
And this interlocal agreement was drafted or, and/or reviewed by our city attorney, correct?
That's correct, Mayor and Counsel. Planning brought this to me with the recommendation from ZBA. Some of these criterion could have been listed as conditions or requirements of ZBA's approval alone, but because one of the parties we're dealing with is another local government entity, it was my advice that we pursue this as a three-way contract to help memorialize it and bolster those obligations through a contract, not just a unilateral decision of ZBA.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Just for clarity and reiteration, the, the tower assembly is now on private property, correct?
Yes.
And the, some of the dishes and apparatus that are on the existing tower are not just the county. There's also some private entities who have leased a portion of that tower.
Yes, it's leased to multiple, multiple private vendors as well as publics.
Good. The, the ZBA really had a robust discussion. I, I think that they should be commended for listing as, as long as they did in making the recommendations to accommodate the neighbors as much as possible. I think this is something that's vitally important for the, for the safety of our community, and I'm certainly glad that the county is committed to procuring another location that's away from the, from those neighbors. So I hope that comes true in five years for their sake, but ZBA did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Nelson. That's an example of the value of a council liaison, and I really appreciate you having been at that meeting and, and hearing the discussion. It's very helpful. Councilmember Rogers, you had your right on?
Nope.
Councilmember Ennis?
I have one question. Why is it called a monopole?
It's, it's a single pole that's, it's self-supported.
Well, isn't that other, well, the, the other one is, is one pole, but it's got guy wires.
It's got guy wires, and it's actually more of a lattice structure. This is actually just one big metal pole.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Turning to page four, we have no items for executive session, which brings us, Councilmember Peterson, to?
Mayor, it's my honor and privilege to ask for an adjournment.
It is 8:36, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, Counsel. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Counsel.